Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Call us to order. It's 6:37. This is a meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union Board. Today is May 12th. Union, pardon me. Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union District will come to order. Adjustments to the agenda. Jason Terry, do you wish to suspend the rules in order to operate as a nine-member board? And if so, do you have a motion?
Hi, David. Thank you. Yeah, I do have a motion. I'd like to suspend the rules to operate. I'm sorry. I'd like to suspend the rules and operate as a nine-member board with equal representation from Rockingham School District, the so-called Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary District, and Bellas Falls Union High School, as per the advice of Sean Tuohy of the Board's Council, Lynn Lynn Blackman and Minitski.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second? Well, thank you, Lynn and Priscilla. Jason, of course, has read in on this. But simply put, we're in an interesting position because the WNESU bylaws indicate that the WNESU Board is comprised of five districts with three voting members each for a total of 12 times five or three times five, 15 voting members, which means an eight-member quorum. We have been extremely fortunate so far since reorganization, and I believe we've had a full house and all of our votes have exceeded that eight-member quorum that's called for under the bylaws as they exist. And what Jason has just done is a housekeeping move that we actually did the previous two years where we suspended the rules. Sean Tuohy's advice, and Sean, I guess you could say is Pietro's right-hand man on these matters, is we could, of course, amend the bylaws, but then we would likely have to amend them again when Westminster joins. So he said, suspend them until Westminster's in and then deal with it. That's the play. We are open for discussion if anyone would like to continue the discussion. I'm not seeing any hands, so I do see a hand. Priscilla, you recognize?
David, what is the expectation on timeframe for the others? Since we're under the motion, I just would like to know what with Westminster and Grafton and how will that work?
I would like to defer to either Jack or Cheryl, who I think can give you an authoritative answer. Jack has a hand up, so we'll hear from Jack first, anyway.
The way this works is Westminster will be an independent district effective, we believe, July 1, 2022. We will probably be taking steps to separate the two entities. There'll be elections for reps. I don't have the dates on that, Cheryl does, but the effective date that they take position is then. We might have an argument about whether or not they should be admitted in September because of the way the SPE wrote their decision, but it's definitely by July 1, and we can figure out what we want to do on the September date. Would that be your understanding also? Cheryl?
We're lacking audio.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Yes, what Jack just stated is correct. In addition, you know, there are steps that the State Board of Education asked us to go through. We will elect a board. Those dates have actually not been firmly established, but we do know that we Westminster should have elected a board, should have entered into an agreement with Athens and Grafton about the finances involved, and should be working and then reporting to the State Board of Education by September 15th of this year, but to take full authority and responsibility by July 1 of 2022, as Jack indicated.
Now, there is a little quirk here in that the state has not decided whether or not Wyndham, whether or not the Wyndham Northeast District will continue in the absence of Westminster. So it is possible we could have, there could be three boards rather than two boards coming out of this divorce, God forbid, but it's at least theoretically possible. And, you know, the one time I think it's a good idea is when I think we need more votes for Athens and Grafton, but otherwise, you know, here it is.
Thank you. Priscilla, any follow-up?
And yeah, so what we're assuming is that we'll have the Westminster with three and we'll have the Grafton with three?
That's the hope. Or six, depending on what the state does to us on the 19th of this month.
Okay, the chair wishes to be recognized here. And I guess the point I would drive home is there are some uncertainties as what the future looks like, which is why Jason Terry has moved to suspend the rules and operate as a nine-member board. Are we ready for the question? Any other questions? Comment? Okay, then I will roll call it. Priscilla, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. George?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Aye.
Jack?
Yep.
Okay. Molly?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Okay, it appears we have unanimity on this issue. Let's get back to those adjustments. Chris, do you have any adjustments?
No, I do not.
Okay, I'm going to suggest two here, and I need some guidance here from you, Deb. Does negotiations have anything to report out to this board? In which case?
I could say something briefly, very briefly.
Okay, so we will hold an executive session for the purpose of negotiations update, and we will also add a personnel matter paraprofessional. Any others? All right, then. Communication and public comment. I'm going to take the board's leave here and welcome Ian Spardalotti to the SU Board. Ian, it was nice of you to step up to the plate after a year and a half or so of having that seat in Westminster not filled. It is the chair's ruling that all members of all boards are de facto members of the Supervisory Union Board, although there are only actually three voting members from each of those entities. And I would like to point out that both the Union Elementary Chair, Jack Brier, and the High School Chair, Molly Bannock, are not regular voting members, but do dutifully attend these meetings and participate and act as that voting member as necessary. So thank you for being here. We look forward to your participation. Any other communication and public comment that you're aware of, Chris?
No, I do not have any at this time, David.
Okay, well, thank you. Minutes of April 28, 2021. Can I have a motion on those, please?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of April 28, 2021.
Okay. Is there a second? I'm going to give the second to Cheryl in this case. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Lynn? Oh, I'll come right back to you, Priscilla. Lynn?
I was noticing that under reports and the recovery plan, it put recovery plan will take place of continuous recovery plan. Is that supposed to be the CIP instead of recovery in there?
Can you square us away?
Yeah, it should read that the recovery plan will take the place of the continuous improvement plan.
Improvement.
So that FY 2122, school year.
Right. So it had recovery instead of improvement in there.
Okay. Any other corrections? All right, Priscilla?
Just a question on that. And I love having Molly be here, but when she's listed as members in attendance, that gives us 10 members, and it looks like there are 10 voting members there. So we previously put others in attendance instead of, and only put the voting members on there. So I don't know whether we want to do that or not. That's up to the team, what they feel.
May I ask a question, Priscilla? Are you suggesting then that we would have to list, one would be voting members in attendance and then others?
Well, we have others in attendance, so we've always previously put anyone that was not a voting member into the others in attendance.
Is there any objection to the correction that Priscilla's offering here? I'm not hearing one, so thank you for that, Priscilla. Are we ready for the vote? Anyone else? Okay, then let me roll call it again. Deb Wright, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Molly?
Aye.
Jason Terry?
Aye.
Priscilla?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Lynn Morgan?
Aye.
Okay. Cheryl Charles?
Aye.
Jack Brier?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Reports, Assistant Superintendent Esser 2, Summer School. I see a hand up here, Chris. Would you like to be recognized?
Yes, please. Yeah, so how this will work is I'm going to present the Esser 2, and Lynn will then follow up with the Summer School Report. So if you're all set, we can get started on that, David.
That's great. And I just want to tell board members that I have gotten a little bit of a preview from both Chris and Lynn, and I am personally very enthusiastic about the work that they've done. So, Chris, go ahead.
Is there a mute issue here or?
It appears that we have the video but not the audio, so can you help us out?
So you can't hear the video?
No.
Nothing. Nothing at all.
Let's see. And once we've
Can you hear it now?
Created our plan under Esser 2 and how we're going to
Mr. Chair, it stopped again.
I would share the work that we're doing with Esser 2 and have a brief discussion. First, I'd like to start back with Esser 1. Esser 1 was the money we first received, and it was used for mitigation purposes. And so what do we do my litigation purposes? Well, it's all the money that we were spending, such as supplies, disinfectant masks, barriers for students when we first went into COVID procedures. And so we kept track of all those purchases that were made. And so a lot of this, what we use from Esser 1 was to kind of reimburse the local budgets and some additional, you know, money was used to get us and keep us on track for the long haul of COVID. And so right now, tonight, we're going to talk about Esser 2, recovery. And the three areas that the state really wants us to focus on is social emotional health, truancy and engagement, academic achievement, and success. And once we've created our plan under Esser 2 and how we're going to use the Esser 2 funds with the recovery plan, the next stage will be Esser 3, and that's really talking about the infrastructure of buildings and construction and all the other things that go along with the larger projects. But they haven't rolled out that money to us yet. So moving right along, so Esser 2, there's three focus areas that we really have to pay attention to, and they're student focus areas, and that's the social and emotional functioning, mental health and well-being, student engagement, academic achievement, and success. So what does it mean by social emotional skills? Well, the social emotional skills are the essential for connecting with others that students and even a lot of adults have. So they help with us manage emotions, building healthy relationships, and a lot of cases, you know, in some cases, it's even feeling empathy. So what do social emotional skills help us with, students with? Certain things like gaining confidence, resolving conflict, managing stress and anxiety, learning social norms, and make appropriate decisions. These focus areas, keep in mind, should not be considered interdependent. They're designed to place districts in a disposition beyond traditional academics, while at the same time acknowledging that academics will be a core area of recovery work. Moving on, what does the plan need to consider? Well, a recovery plan is a formal document created by an organization that contains detailed instructions on how to respond to unplanned instances such as natural disasters, power outages, cyber attacks, and other disruptive events. And in our case, it's COVID. Recovery plan should be organized by type of disasters in each location. So seeing this as a national and a world problem, our recovery plan is going to be specifically for the COVID-19 and getting education back on track. When we conducted the data analysis, the principals provided data that we used and will continue to use to determine our current levels of achievement versus where we were before the pandemic started. So what do we need to do it and why? We do this so we can compare the data from, for instance, the winter of 2020 to the winter of 21 to begin the process of what our needs are for post-COVID. This process will allow us to be prepared, the team, to identify the problems of practice, the root cause analysis, and long-term goal setting, which can also be considered a strategic plan. What are the six improvement principles? Well, first, we look at focused improvement. And focused improvement is principle is the process of applying systematic problem-solving methods to the process relies on aligning the correct method to the correct scenario. Also involves performance measures. What are performance measures? Well, performance measures are used to quantitatively assess the implementation and outcomes of our educational system. And when we properly define, they can provide useful information on how we as schools and programs are performing and whether educators are meeting their instructional goals. We also base it on outcomes, and outcomes are the change in individuals, systems, policies, or institutions that we seek to achieve. You know, one of the new areas that you might not have heard on before is what is discipline-based inquiry? Well, it is the acknowledgement that students learn best when learning is meaningful to them, when things are meaningful to them. So students' tasks must have an authenticity that our work being done in the classroom is real work that reflects what they're being taught. And then we go on to accelerated learning. That's pretty much the total system for speeding up and enhancing both the design and the learning process whereby results improve significantly and the time take to learn is dramatically reduced. So I guess you can look at it like, a quote that I found was very relevant. It says, "We can accomplish more together than we, even the best of us, can accomplish alone." So when you look at, you know, these bullets here, making the work problem-specific and user-centered, focus on variation and performance, understanding systems that produce the current outcomes, examine relevant measures for improvement, using discipline inquiry and accelerated learning through networking. This is all the stuff that we're going to have to get down into as a recovery team. And where do we begin? The principles are the foundation for problem-solving, along with considering three fundamental areas. What are we trying to accomplish? How will we know when a change is an improvement? And what change can we make that will result in the improvement? So first of all, what we have to do is we have to define a specific problem. Next, we gather information, generate possible solutions, evaluate ideas, and then choose one, and then continue to evaluate what was put in play, for example, benchmarks, testing in other areas. So this is what we'll need to do. First, following the state guidelines, we need to develop a problems of practice. And that's going to be through a root cause analysis. A problems of practice is an area that a school or school district identifies that focuses on the instructional core, is directly observable, is actionable, and connects to the broader strategy of improvement, identifying a problem of practice, the first step, and elements of instructional rounds. So what is the root cause analysis? Root cause analysis is an approach for identifying an underlying cause of an incident so that most effective solutions can be identified and implemented. So if you look out here, you know, starting with, we need to do problems of practice, which the state has given us forms to work on and submit to them, by using a root cause analysis, either goal or strategy to address the problems of practice, and that's really what we'll be doing as a recovery team, what specific activities to address the goal, an implementation and evaluation plan, and the human material resources required to how and to how to pay for them. So human resources and materials, this just means what we need, we need to identify through this committee, not just how we're going to spend that Esser money, grant money, but who we need on and around the table to achieve this. And it's pretty much a part of that is the evaluation plan, which we all know, you know, the evaluation plan is just a written document that describes, you know, how we will monitor and evaluate our programs, you know, also as well as how we intend to use the evaluation and results program to improve decision-making. And it really serves to clarify the program's purpose and anticipate outcomes. And that's all the different things that we need to create and use a recovery plan for. And so what we're going to be starting with tomorrow, we have our second meeting, which is going to be from 3:00 to 5:00, is this is when we get into a root cause analysis. And this depiction here is, gives you a great idea of what actually root cause analysis concept is. If you look at it, we kind of look at the weed, the part of the surface is the problem that we're dealing with, and it's easy to see the root, which is the source, is beneath the surface, it's obscure, more difficult to get to. Now, the factors that contribute to the problem are the underlying issue here, which is the root. When we talk about drilling down into these issues, this is where we focus when conducting a root cause analysis, down below the source. The root is the system we need to dissect. It's important to understand that all the parts that contribute to the issues and the problems will need to be analyzing as a recovery team. So we need to look at, you know, the source of the problem. If we don't get to the source of the problem, it's just going to keep popping up. So the things we look at is the contributing factors, underlying issues, and really figuring out how we can fix them so they're not going to come back and resurface. Because a lot of times, what we see is that we see a problem, we just churn it off from the surface. And many of us know that if we don't get to the root, it's just going to keep coming back. So this is one of the forms that the state is requiring us to do. It's the problems of practice worksheet, and this is where the main work really starts. And they want us to look at different things. They want it to be based on a factual observation, which is something that is concerned with facts or contains facts rather than giving just theories or personal interpretations. And remember, any comparison that is not strictly factual, that's when we run the risk of being interpretive as subjective. And we want to look at the clarifying questions, and these are just simple questions of fact that should they clarify that the line may provide the nuts and bolts so that the recovery team can ask good program questions and provide useful feedback to the boards and all the other constituents that we need to provide this recovery plan, you know, strategic plan for. So this is one of the other forms that we'll need to submit to the state. This document will assist us in identifying the problems of practice when we address the three areas that we spoke about from the beginning, academic improvement, socially emotional needs, and student engagement. And so as you can see, there's a lot of work that we have cut out for the recovery team. We'll have our second meeting tomorrow night from 3:00 to 5:00, Zoom, and we'll really be looking at and answering the questions by using the root cause analysis and the problems of practice technique. So we'll keep the board up to date and remember that the board does have representation on the recovery team. I think you have five or six board members. So I would anticipate that, you know, we would have a standing item on all the board agendas so these members can report back out to their boards and also have, gather questions that the boards want the recovery team to look at. But we're going to keep everyone up to date. The plan is in place. No money has been, you know, spent regards to Esser 2. And later on, once we have everything documented, we'll be reporting back out on how and what the Esser 1 money looked like that we spent. So thank you for your time tonight, and if you have any questions, we're happy to take them up. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the board would help me if I had hands here. Do we have any? Chris, I'm not aware of any questions. Lynn Morgan?
Chris, would this, would these slides be on a place where we can have access to them to read them over again? There was a lot of information there to try and digest.
Yeah, I can send out the slideshow for everyone. I can put it in a, I have it in PDF form. I was going to share after tonight's meeting.
Okay, wonderful.
Cheryl Charles?
Yes, a question first. Thank you, Chris, for that presentation. You know, the emphasis here, and it is very appropriate, the emphasis, though, is on problems. It's on, you know, what isn't working with children with a focus on how to remediate those. What about and how are we serving those children who will be above proficiency in their grade levels? What if they have actually done well in this last year? While so many kids have lost ground, what about those who are actually doing well? Are we well-prepared to serve them in addition?
Yeah, that's all part of the root cause analysis that we'll be looking at. It's just not the kids who are struggling. It's all learners. It's the, it's from A to Z, and that's it's a huge undertaking, but, you know, we'll get going on that tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you.
Priscilla Lambert?
I think in also commenting on Cheryl's comment, I think we have to keep in mind that those that we're looking at as doing well are still not doing what they could have been doing because they have missed out on so much. And so they are still below. They may be testing okay because they have managed to do some stuff on their own and be able to keep up and do those things, but there's But there's so much more they could have done had we not been facing this, this COVID-19 pandemic and had them out of school. Because as I pointed out last night, the NEA did a study where it said that ten days of missed school has an impact. And if you get the twenty, you're looking at, at ones that are constantly missing all the time. And that is, is, is a level that we're looking at, problems with mental health and well-being. So we've definitely had all of that with all of our students this year in some form or another. And so every student has lost in some way. And thus, so if, as Chris said, which I'm pleased to hear him say, was that we need to look at all of them and be, and be helping all of them because all of them are behind.
George, I do have your hand here. I would like to know, Chris, if you have any response for Priscilla, or whether you felt that was entirely self-explanatory.
Yeah, no, I think her and Cheryl are both hitting a nail on the head. It's just not about the kids who are struggling, it's about all the kids because everyone lost ground. And for instance, teachers, and teachers lost ground. It's just one of those things that, you know, that's why we have to do this, this analysis because we really have to get to the root and figure out, one, how we can gain that ground back, but also continue to move forward. And I mean, like I said, we have a thirty-four-plus recovery team. So with all those people around the table and anticipating, we're gonna bring what we need to create the plan.
Thank you, Chris. George.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that my comment is kind of a combination of the last three comments. And yes, things were lost, but to say that every kid would have done better outside of the pandemic, I mean, we may be led to believe that, but it's, it's an assumption. And until Chris and the, and the recovery team really look at that, we, we don't really know. So it's, it's, it doesn't, you know, maybe there were some kids that really did better this way. And all of these are just assumptions. So to say that, say it as fact is, is, would be kind of inappropriate. So that's all. Thanks.
Additional comment, Lynn Carey.
One of the things I wanted to share, though, is the curriculum that we do have, both in math and in literacy, allow for personal growth. So if a child, say, has really made a lot of grains, gains, they did a lot of reading at home over the, the six months we did, we were not in session, and they've done a lot of reading and they've really gained. They are actually tested individually and put in a reading group that meets their needs exactly where they are as an independent and a learning reader so that math and literacy, they both can grow wherever they are within the classroom because we do differentiate our instructions. So we do meet the needs of kids where they are. And, and we do have, you know, some computer programs that help kids too if they, they want to advance or if they're, you know, beyond what's going on or just take a step further. So, but yeah, we, it's about recovery, but it's about the whole child recovery. And that's, that's where we're going, you know, with it. That's where the feds and the state and all the people, the researchers say we need to go with the whole child. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Are there other questions about the Esser two grant and the recovery teams? If they're not, I guess that we will move ahead. And Lynn, if you're ready, tell us all about summer school. It sounded pretty interesting when you and Chris and I were discussing that informally a little earlier this week.
Sure. Chris, can, can you share your screen with me?
Yep, you should be able to.
I got it. Okay, am I sharing? Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, you might wanna fill the screen, enlarge the screen.
I'm just taking this right off the website, so. That's what I have. So we, we called our camp, we've been working quite a long time, since February on what, what we're going to do. So we called it Camp Achieve because it is about recovery, but it's more of the, it's more about having the kids, you know, we kind of just left them in March 2020 and didn't do anything with them until September 2020. We did do individual, I mean, they did have remote learning. We did spend the summer actually doing remedial work with students who struggle. We did spend that one-on-one time with select students who really were, we were worried they were going to lose. So, I mean, we did, but you know, the kids didn't get together, the kids were not in supervised fun activities. And so we wanted to bring them all together this summer, the best we can. What, one of the glaring things was our students in Rockingham, particularly Saxon's River and Central, had no program. And that, to me, was a very big oversight over the years. And we had already started making moves toward opening programs there. But with the Esser one money, we were able to put together a summer program for opening up those two districts. And then, once we get it going up and going, we also want to continue with the after-school program that is, in the other three schools, we wanted to replicate that at Central and Saxon's River just to ensure equity among our students. It was a real oversight that our little ones, now, the kids in Central did have access to the Y program. The YMCA did do an after-school program, and they did, Saxon's kids could have, could, we bussed them over to take part in that. But we really want the same kind of opportunities for all our students. So, we do have a mission statement, and it's to provide an enjoyable experience where students can strengthen their skills in self-esteem and growth mindset and academic skills. So it's really about the social, emotional, the mental health, the the kind of engagement, which is the third pillar. And we really want to do, you know, meet the needs of all children and meet them about the whole child. We want to meet them with fun, excitement, we want them to come, we want some, some great stuff for these kids. So the camp hours are going to be seven-thirty to four, Monday through Friday. We have a grant from the state again so that breakfast and lunch are free. So, and there's a snack involved. The students will be bussed, we will be able to buss them if they need that. And we will also provide them with swimming and field trips, and I'll get to that later. But, so yeah, it's, the camp hours are this. It doesn't cost any money to go because, again, we're using Esser, Esser one money. So a daily schedule is essentially, we have the academics in the morning. And it's like thirty minutes of literacy and then thirty minutes of a literacy activity. And then they go out for recess. And then it's thirty minutes of math and then thirty minutes of a math activity. And we kind of split them up depending on the numbers. And they'll get the, you know, the recess and the snack. We also have circles in the morning where, you know, they'll break up into small groups with different adults and just share, you know, hello, how are you? Today's a great day, what did you do? You know, that kind of connection. The idea is to have the kids connected to some adults and their peers. We left them alone for a long time. I think the, the parents have done a tremendous job working with their children. But you know, I think it's about time, you know, we step in, give everybody a break and just have fun with these kids. So, they will have projects, fun learning projects, there'll be a break. They could, they'll have interactive read-alouds, and we'll share reading with them. Then they have lunch, then there's a little bit more running around. Then there's, in the afternoon, there's these activities, and we call them theme activities. And so each week has a different theme for each different site, but they're the same, they're just repeated, you know, for everyone. So we have some field trips on Fridays. Some of these we're not going to do, but we are doing Echo Lake, of course, the Nature Center in Grafton, the Southern Vermont National Natural History Museum. And so when it's like Nature Week, they're going to come for two or three days in the afternoon and bring animals and talk and, and start the teaching. And then we'll go visit them on Friday and see what they have and all their things. So we have some trips. So one of our themes is Robotics Week. And what they're going to do is really use a computer. They have Lego robots, which is a very big deal. And they will work on building these robots and really, you know, stressing their problem-solving skills. And they'll be doing it with computers and real-life robots. So we have a STEM coordinator, our STEAM coordinator, and one of our science teachers at the middle school is going to be leading that. We have music. Another week is music and art. And so we have some keyboards and we have different things. I'm looking for another talented music teacher who would want to, you know, to lead some of that training. But we do have it in some schools. We'll have music, keyboards, drums, things like that. So nature is a very big part of summer camp, you know, as we all know. And it's, we're engaging in environmentally-based activities and looking at the next-generation science standards. So there's places that we're going to go to hikes. Again, they'll have, you know, they'll explore bats, owls, learn about the one hundred ten varieties of trees in Vermont and feathers and bones. We're all, we're gonna look at all those things. And so we're really excited about that. And we've got several places helping us to achieve that. We have Sports Week, and that is, you know, we want to teach our kids kind of, and they get a lot of this in their PE, but soccer, basketball, kickball. We're gonna have a little basketball camp. And each school will have, we have a basketball camp person leading it. And each school, each site will have her different weeks. So she'll be here first week, second week, third week, fourth. Lot of organization, a lot of hard work. But, so we will stress teamwork, self-control, respect, you know, that kind of thing. Arts and crafts goes along with music. We're going to have someone come in at each site, a pottery teacher, and they'll be able to make some pottery, and they'll have those at the end. And, but there'll be all kinds of arts and crafts during that week. We're also hoping to do some drama with, and that'll come, in fact, let me just Reader's Theater, and have them, have the students, you know, make sets and practice lines and perform, videotape them, send them, you know, share them with the parents if the parents agree that they can be videotaped, and have some fun with that. And again, team building and, so there's a lot of activities. Couple of things that are different from previous years because we've always had summer camp. We've always had summer school. It's free this year, it used to cost, and it probably will again, but it's free because of COVID. It's part of our recovery, part of bringing the kids back together, giving them something to do in the summer, helping out parents. It's open now in Central and Saxon's where it wasn't before. And Rockingham, you know, we were not, we really should have had them. But anyway, it's, we're gonna have it there, it is free, meals are free this year. And essentially, that's pretty much what's different. You know, it may be a couple more field trips. We're trying to get a field trip every Friday. We have, we're looking, you know, we're pretty well set with our staff. But it's hard because I, we can't have any more kids than what we have. And we have about, I would say, two hundred twenty-five kids with the four schools, of the five schools. And then, of course, we do have a program at the high school as well, and which we always have, and we're going to have that this year. But we're also going to be able to have more teachers and pay the teachers, more teachers, to do more work. So that's our summer school program as it's starting out. And as we look at it in the beginning of May, and we're just, we're really hoping that it's gonna be a fun summer for everyone.
Well, thank you, Lynn. It rates a big wow. I already have a hand up from an enthusiastic supporter of yours, I believe his name is Chris Pratt. And if you can give me my screen back, I'd like to see everyone. So just as soon as we get that screen, Superintendent Pratt, you are recognized.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't think it's, I don't do it enough, but, but I have to say, I mean, the amount of work that goes into creating a summer school program. You know, you, you talk about the forms, the hiring, the interviews, making sure that, you know, everyone's vetted who's gonna be working with the kids, making sure it's equitable across all the districts. It's, um, it's unbelievable. And, and she, and Lynn took this on to bring our summer programs to a whole new level. And, and that was on top of all the work that she's been doing. She's already done with the Esser one grants, and, and now what we're doing with the Esser two grants. So I'm gonna say, you're getting your money's worth when it comes to the work that Dr. Carey is doing and continues to do. Because it frees me up, you know, to, to do other things for the boards and everything else. But I've been very impressed with, with all that she's been doing.
Thank you. And we are also in the middle of building the, the, the CFG, the Consolidated Federal Grants, which are a Title I, Title II, and Title IV. So, and that's looking at school next year, so.
I just want, I wanna say, everybody is entitled to their opinion, but I think it's worthwhile being reminded of the fact that we got some pretty high-performance people working in Westminster Station. This is, we've just seen two very good examples of that. So with that comment, I would like to open the floor if there are questions or comments. Do I have any hands? Cheryl Charles, and then Lynn Morgan.
Dr. Carey, a question, you just made the comment that we have about two hundred twenty-five students enrolled. And did you start to say that we don't have room for more? And tell us where we are with enrollment and how you would be handling that.
Okay, so Central has fifty students. Saxon's River has thirty-four. Grafton has eleven. Westminster has fifty-four. Bellows Falls Middle School has about, I would say, thirty-nine. So what had happened is, early on, at the end of February, beginning of March, I sent home an interest survey to the families, every family, saying, are you interested? And, and so what that did, you know, Google surveys will put everything on a chart. So I had it separated by school, who was interested. So that was timestamped. Those were the first people, you know, the first run. Then we sent home papers because we didn't have a whole lot, and we thought, oh, you know, this might peter out, you know? So we sent home paper registrations to each child. We used paper, there was a pretty brochure on one side, all the exciting things. And it was school-specific on the weeks, telling us what the project weeks were. And it, they could choose, do they want all six weeks, do they want two weeks, they want one week? You know, that sort of thing. So they filled it out on the back, and we got those back, and we got many more. We reached capacity about two weeks ago. And what's, the problem is, is now the buzz is out there, and it's like be there or be square. But we, we don't have, you know, like, we closed it because the rule is one adult to thirteen students. And I just had to be very careful to ensure safety for everyone. So I've got the, the Paris and the AIDS, we have a couple of college students, you have to be over eighteen. And we've hired several of them at each different site. And then I have the teachers. Well, a lot of the teachers want to work in the morning, but, you know, they want their afternoons off, and you can't blame them. So while they're there for the academic piece that we're all excited about, you know, we just have to make sure that when the afternoon comes, we have enough people there to keep the kids engaged. Now, generally, a lot of afternoons, we're going to have a presenter. Now generally, a lot of afternoons, we're going to have a presenter. So that would be, say, Meredith coming and doing robots one week. So we have a presenter and then we have the basketball camp person for Sports Week, so she'll come. But we, I have to be very careful that we're covered with that one to thirteen. So we're waitlisting kids. All I know is there might be three kids at West, at Central that are waitlisted. But I, I believe every other child that asked is, is in. Um, we've gave them, we've given them many opportunities to come in and uh, but I do have to be very careful that we are covered. Because, you know, I mean, a kid starts kicking sand, you know, and the next thing you know, two adults, whatever. We just have to be really careful to ensure safety along with the fun.
Thank you, Lynn. Uh, Lynn Morgan, pardon me, Cheryl Charles, does that answer your question? Is there a follow-up?
No, that's fine. Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Lynn.
I, I believe I said I was going to recognize Lynn next, Lynn Morgan. Am I correct, Lynn? If I'm incorrect, okay. If you are recognized, I'm going to go to Jessa and Jack.
First of all, I wanted to
You, you are recognized, Lynn, and I'm going to go to Jessa and Jack when you're done.
Yep, Lynn, first I wanted to just thank you so much. This sounds just wonderful. I'm excited. Want to be a kid again. Um, and then after what you just said to answering Cheryl's question, you mentioned Graft, Grafton Athens. There's only eleven students out of what the fifty there that want to do summer school?
You know, there's, I think there's forty-nine students, but several of them are still, they're being um, you know, VT, VLC. So they haven't, they're not totally comfortable. Um, and it's funny because they're all pretty much young ones, so first, second, third grade. That, I think they said there's one fourth grade student, but they're all pretty much young too, which just changed the dynamics. But you can have a lot of fun with the, with the young ones and that's a real curious time. So that is, you know, kind of great. But yeah, we were holding out and uh, that's what we ended up with. Uh, which is fine because the quality, you know, would be like, you know, a nanny or something. The, the attention that kids will get is going to be fantastic.
Thank you.
Anything else, Lynn? Okay, I guess we're good then. Jessa West Clark.
Hi, um, I just wanted to mention the VT, VLC kids. We got the survey and email. Um, and then never got any follow-up.
The, the survey was, you filled it out?
Yeah, and so it was like yes, no, or more information, please.
Um, what happened is if you, you filled it out, that went into a database. So that's uh how we knew that there was interest. It was called a summer school interest. And uh so, you know, I don't know.
I just know, I, I answered it for my kid. I said, maybe, but I'd like more information. And that's all we ever heard. So I don't know. I think that might be the case with all the VT, VLC kids, if it went home from school as paper. Just wanted to put that out there.
Okay.
Thank you, Jessa. Worth some follow-up, I believe. Anything else, Jessa?
No, thank you.
Jack?
A couple of questions, uh, Lynn. One is uh about equity. I'm, I, it sounded like that being able to uh have the same uh level of program in all the different locations is looking like a challenge. And I, you know, I'm not sure what we can do to help that, but I am concerned that uh uh, you know, we have a commitment and a legal obligation to provide equity. And I, I just want to emphasize, you know, do it, do whatever we can to solve that, including perhaps uh sharing resources if there are teachers that can be in more than one location. Uh, you know, let's do whatever we have to, to get that fixed. Uh, I don't, are these contracts going to be uh contracts with the SU? Are they going to be with individual districts, for example?
They're um letters of hire. So it would say up to X amount of days at X amount of rate. And um, they're SU. It's like any grant, it's SU. The, the thing is, is that teachers, you know, we're asking an awful lot of them anyway. And a lot of them are just like, I've worked so hard this year. Because not only did they have the hybrid on Wednesdays, but we had training every Wednesday uh for the teachers. So they, when they were done teaching at two, they went into training till three thirty every single Wednesday. There was training or a staff meeting or something. But um, teachers are more comfortable working in their own schools with the students that they know, with their own children. And when they make that commitment, it's pretty much that they want to be um in their own schools, you know, with their own students. But I did move a, a teacher today um from uh Westminster over to Central. And she had worked at Central uh last year. She, it wasn't a, it, it just wasn't something she really wanted to do. Of course, she's going to do it, but so um, yeah, it's hard.
Just a quick follow-up and then Chris got his hand up. Uh, the reason I'm asking some of this is not only equity issue, but also just for the population from whom we're bringing folks in. Uh, there are, it sounds like, you know, VA teachers, grammar school teachers, uh Compass School teachers really wouldn't be eligible to participate in this. Uh, I, I asked because I've actually had queries from, uh, from a number of folks uh from, you know, from independent schools uh wanting to know if there was a way for them to participate. And I didn't have an answer. It, am I hearing not really?
The um, the application uh or the job is on school spring. So they can apply on school spring and then we interview them from there.
Okay, I, I just, you know, didn't know because, you know, oft, oftentimes people in, in independent schools don't have the same, you know, their credentialing process is different than ours. And I didn't know if we were just, if they were effectively boxed out and you were looking for music teachers. And I can think of about three that might be interested, but they're not, but they're independent school folks.
Doesn't matter, send them our way. All we need are fingerprints. Um, I will tell you this, funny you should say that, Jack. Tomorrow morning at ten o'clock, I'm meeting with Compass School to talk to them about their plans for summer school and their plans for next year. And those kinds of things that our grants help cover, so um, but yeah.
You wish that would be a, or would you? Because I, at least one of the people I, that, that asked me about this was from there.
Yeah, we don't generally uh hear anything from them. So yeah, just send them to me. That would be great. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Jack. Chris Pratt.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, you just talked a little bit more um, piggyback on what Jack was saying. You know, I'm, I'm very proud of the uh, the work, but also I think we're really moving in the, in a good direction regards to equitable, equity like Jack is talking about. I think this year we can honestly say there's more equity in, in the summer programs, even after school programs um this year than any other year. And I think we're, we're moving in the right direction like we want. And we're going to keep pushing in that direction. Um, you know, like anything else, it's baby steps, but we took a huge step this year in regards to the amount of programs. Not, like I said, not just for summer school, but after school program opportunities. We're really getting um, making a lot of progress in regards to equity for all the schools in the SU. And I think everyone should be proud of that, you know, boards for their support, teachers and administrators for all the work. Because we are really working together and we're, we're really seeing the results from that.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a hand, Priscilla?
Yes, I have several questions. Um, I did not hear anything for the high school. I only heard for the middle school. I am also concerned with this not being able to take all of our students, if every student wanted to be participating in this, because this is recovery. And I think all of them need to recover in, in all, in some area, whether it's social or, or whether it's academic or what it is. Um, particularly social and mental health. How many, I need to know how many weeks as well. I missed that apparently.
So I did mention, I, I did mention the high school is having a, a summer school program as well. And this year we're going to add two more teachers so that they can support those students. We always had summer school, the Title One Grant paid for it. And um, we had two teachers, I think. And this year we're, I think it was two teachers for four weeks. This year the high school's having four teachers for six weeks. And all of our summer school programs are six weeks. And they start July fifth and they end, I believe, August thirteenth. And the other question was, yes, and um, I think there's two or three kids from one family. And what I'm waiting for is if I can get someone else, one more person uh would make it. We are covered now, fully staffed now. But again, the requirements, the safety, the responsibility, especially because in summer school, there is a lot of um, uh, non-academic time. So there's a lot of non-structured time. We want the kids to play, to run, to have fun. We're taking them on trips. We're taking them swimming at the Rockingham Pool. We need to ensure that we have enough adults. If anyone on the board wants to volunteer or get paid, I could pay you. Uh, I would love it. Uh, I think it would be so much fun for people to come and uh help out. But we need a commitment. We need someone that can commit um to uh, to the program. So that's where it's been hard. I had someone leave today from Central and I, yesterday, and I had to fix that gap by pulling someone from Westminster and moving someone from another school into Westminster. And um, so yeah, it's, it, you know, but there's not any, there's no other kids except for maybe those two or three. And he asked today and he got the paper and he got the survey. So, you know, and I told him how badly I felt, but we'll put you on a waitlist. And if I get somebody else kicking around, uh, that's really interested, that can help, that it would be great. And then we would open it, you know, then we would say, you're on the waitlist, but you're in.
Follow-up question, Priscilla?
Yeah, it does sound like there's, might be some VT, VLC students that didn't understand the programming. They need to hopefully make some space for, hopefully we can hire somebody additional if we need that. Because I think everybody should be there if, if they, well, not just if they want to be, but if they're identified as a need of, of a recovery program. We need to be encouraging them to attend and be taking them. Also, as a follow-up, um, attendance, is that going to be, you know, expected that they will be there on a regular basis and not be missing any? In other words, mandatory?
There's no, there's no law like there is during, you know, during the school year, ten days. We're sending you a letter, then, you know, twenty days we're calling DCF, not, not for summer school. But the idea being it's going to be so much fun, they're going to want to be there. And uh, so I'm not, I'm not worried about that. We have advertised um since February and for the, for jobs. And I know that principals ask at their staff meetings. But I tell you, you know, you can't really not get the teachers, they need some time too. We all need time. But uh, the ones that are doing it, they just get a gold star because that is, that's a lot they're doing. And, and I, we had to make it attractive. It wasn't like you have to be there eight hours. It's, you can do it four hours, you could do it in the morning, or you can come in the afternoon, do four hours, or you can do eight hours. And most of them chose four hours in the morning. And we're so grateful for that because we need teachers with their expertise to help with the academic skills.
Uh, Priscilla, with your permission, I want to sneak a question in here from Jessa and then come right back to you. Um, Jessa, your question?
Yeah, I'm just following up on something Priscilla brought up. Um, if we're that tight on staffing, what if one of them calls in sick?
I will do that. I will be the substitute for summer program. Because everybody rolls up their elbows and gets in and does the uh, helps out. If two people call in sick, I don't know. Um, we would probably get Chris, I don't know. You know, there may be somebody we, you know, we can, we can call, but yeah.
It appears, it appears that Superintendent Pratt did indicate uh affirmative on that, Lynn. So I think you got her roped in as well. And back to you, Priscilla, if you, if you have any follow-up.
Yeah, and you said four hours for the teachers versus eight other. But is there that kind of a provision for students? I know my, one of my grandson has, he's in a mandatory program that they have to be there. Um, it's, it's agreed to my daughter if they're there, if they're committing to every day. Of course, if you get sick, you can't do anything, you know, about that. But, but they can go like four hours or eight hours. So is there that kind of?
Well, the students have that choice. Yeah, the students have that choice. They can leave at noon after they have their lunch. Hmm, but I would say most of them, and most of the parents would want them to stay for the, the enrichment in the afternoon. Uh, the morning is skills and um, that kind of thing, a lot, you know, reading and, and some math and uh, but the afternoon is where the enrichment comes in, um, that growth, that socially emotional, the engagement. And we're really working hard on having some exciting activities for them. Uh, so they could leave if they wanted to, but you know, um, I, I, no one has said that. No parent has said, can my child leave at noon? Which is happening. So it's possible.
Um, presuming that we're ready to move on, um, I would like to update the board on um Act one seventy-three. And I'll try and do this quickly. Um, the uh House Ways and Means Committee voted what's known as S thirteen, which is the uh legislation on uh student waiting out of committee. Apparently was a unanimous eleven to zero uh vote to move it out. It was very, one very interesting um addition to that. And that is that the committee has recommended um waiving the excess spending penalty for twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three. Unfortunately, a, a year too late for uh Superintendent, pardon me, Principal Hodgson, but that is what it is. Um, there will be a summer task force looking into the waits. And it will be composed of eight members of the legislature, two from House Ways and Means, two from House Ed, two from Senate Ed, and I believe it's two from uh Senate Appropriations. Although I may have my money committee wrong there in the Senate. Now, um, there was at seven thirty um, an update from Maggie Lenz, who is the lobbyist working on behalf of the Vermont Coalition for Student Equity. I think that's our final name here. And it's um, an action alert. And I'm going to ask Chris, when the meeting is over, if he would transmit that to all board members. Because what this is, is an ask that board members and anyone else whose arms they can twist um, will get in touch with uh representatives and urge them to take certain actions. That would be more particularly described in that action alert. So I really didn't have a chance to do much more than glance at it, but look for that either after the meeting or uh with uh coffee at breakfast in the morning. So that's your uh one seventy-three coalition update. If there are any questions, I'll try and answer them, but otherwise I'd like to keep moving here. Well, thank you. Okay, um, uh, six, new business for discussion, action. Um, I asked Chris to get this on, and this is a question of uh surveying the board on setting a date to return to in-person uh meetings. And on the administrative end of it, um, identify um an appropriate location and safety protocols. So this is really uh an opportunity for board members to let us know um if they're ready to return to in-person meetings. And I would hope that um, uh, board members who are ready would also be more or less caught up with their vaccinations. So uh, questions, comments? Otherwise, I'm going to ask Chris if he's able to um find us accommodations when we're ready. Um, Cheryl Charles, I see your outline here.
Oh, I, I just, I had a, I had a comment. I think I, I look forward to the survey. I hope we can do this. I think it is the right thing to do. And I would like to have us, I personally would like us to continue the Zoom option or some way for the public to continue to participate, who would not come physically to the meeting. That could be prudent just to reduce the numbers of people in person. But secondly, it enhances the access. So that's just um, one opinion from me. But secondly, it enhances the access. So that's just, um, one opinion from me.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. Anyone else? Jack?
Yeah, then Lynn, uh, the, uh, I, I support Cheryl's point, you know, one of the things that this year has done has been a bit of a godsend for me because there've been times when I physically could not have got to a meeting. And being able to have, uh, to have access and, you know, not, not have one of these nearby while I'm doing it is a real thing. And I, I, I think that we have had vastly more, uh, community participation because they don't have to drive half an hour to sit in a hot room and they can just come in and, you know, confirm for themselves how boring we are and stay in as long as they want. Uh, I think that if we can hybridize this environment, it may require, you know, doing something at the meeting site, you know, big screen, I have no idea. But I, I think that should be part of whatever, uh, go back, semi-back-to-normal plan we might have.
Thank you, Jack. Lynn Morgan and then Jessica West Clark.
Um, I'm just interested in knowing if everybody has been vaccinated. That would be my one prerequisite before we all get together.
Duly noted, Lynn. Thank you for asking that question. And we will ask that question, bearing in mind that I suppose that uh, members could decline to answer it. Jessa and then Priscilla.
Yeah, I just hope we keep the hybrid option. School board this last year has been a pretty hefty time commitment per week. And having to drive to Westminster for the meetings, regardless of knowing the COVID hygiene habits of my fellow board members. It would be, I would have to rethink, uh, my commitment to it if we lose the ability to dial in.
Thank you, Jessa. Your, your concern is duly noted. Um, Priscilla?
I was going to say something very similar. I support Jessa and Cheryl's comments that for, um, having a Zoom is, is really important. It's also important as things open up and some of us are, or all of us are able to maybe do a little traveling because it makes it available to anyone that it is to be able to keep up with our local community and be able to support our students and our administration and all of them in, in meetings. Thanks.
Thank you, Priscilla. Molly and then George?
I'm a supporter of being able to have some face-to-face meetings for the people who are comfortable doing that. Um, for the people who aren't, um, I respect that. I'll tell you that I have a different role at work and have had some real education on talking to people about their vaccinations. And we can't do that. Um, I mean, we can certainly, I think all of us know each other well enough that we would be, you know, be truthful, but it's something that we can't ask people if they have.
Okay, thank you, Molly, for the insight.
Thank you.
Appreciate, very much appreciated, actually. George?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, my, my feeling is that there's something that's been really lost over this last year, uh, the personal connection with people. I've actually seen teachers when I've been out walking with my dog and it's been so nice actually connecting with them on a personal level. Not meeting with you folks, uh, and seeing you in person. It's, it's made a difference and it's, I don't think it's for the better. I think, uh, getting together personally would be a really good thing. I, I mean, I don't care if you're spaced out or masked, whatever, but just getting personal, person-to-person contact is huge and it's been lost. And, you know, if the public wants to join in by Zoom, fine and dandy, but, because that's been a huge thing too. There's been a lot of interaction there and I wouldn't want to lose that either. But, um, you know, working over computers is, is different and it's, there's no personal connection. I, I can't tell you the last time I saw any one of you. Well, I saw, I saw Lynn today in person because I had to stop at the office. But other than that, I haven't seen any of you in a long time. And there's something missing there. So that's just my opinion. And I agree with Molly that, um, if you were to ask me if I was vaccinated or not, I probably wouldn't tell you just on principle. So, thank you.
Uh, Chris, Chris Pratt, did you have a comment here? Okay, all right. Anyone else?
Yeah, David, this is Debbie.
Deb?
Um, I'm of two minds about it. I have my particular schedule. I am inundated with meetings, back-to-back. I'm missing another one me, now, right now, watching this, do being on this one. Um, and I prefer, I like the flexibility of being able to perform because I don't have to rush from place to place to get to a meeting. I mean, it's very difficult for me to, especially since we're now not up the hill. Um, the Westminster, the SUs in Westminster, that has, that also creates additional distance. I can't ask my employees if they're vaccinated. We have to follow all the protocols as though we are not and wear masks coming into the office and have masks out of the field. We're not allowed to just, to stop doing that according to this, to the state. So we have to keep using those. Can't ask them. Um, we're not asking our teachers if they're all vaccinated while they're teaching our children, educating our children. Um, I don't think it's appropriate necessarily to ask all of our members if they are either. And they can, their, their conscience, it makes, dictates this, whether we would, someone tell the truth or not. And I'm simply, and I'll tell you right now, I have not had my vaccinations. And we had a COVID scare in my household, um, down on the first floor because of someone who did get COVID, who was, was a guest, a brief guest, but everyone tested negative. No one has it and we're all making that decision. Um, my husband's the only one in my household who's had both of his vax. And, um, and I like the flexibility of having the option to be in person if it's possible. And I do all my trustee meetings in person, all my, um, planning meetings in person. I do all my ordinance committee meetings in person. But I like to have the flexibility of having something online. I don't want this to go away. And yes, at the end, it also increases transparency from the public and I appreciate that too.
Thank you, Deb. Reason is on the agenda tonight, so we can kick it around. And so far, we're doing a pretty good job of that. Jason Terry, I have your hand.
I'd, I'd prefer to meet in person. I, I am also flexible and I think Zoom has a positive and negatives. And, um, uh, that's all I have to say. I prefer to meet in person. I, I, we, we did a meeting actually at the Rockingham Board. I can't remember when that was. It was a long time ago. It was the first time I met Priscilla and the only time I met Priscilla. I still haven't met Jack. He owes me a beverage. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I haven't met, I've only met Priscilla and you, David, and Molly. I know Molly and George, so.
I want to take note of the fact, it appears that we've heard from every, uh, member on the board tonight, with the exception of Ian. So if you would like any, uh, an opportunity to speak, Ian, I would love to hear from you. Otherwise, I would like to keep moving on to our next topic. Ian, anything that you'd like to add?
I appreciate this, David. Thank you. Um, but I, I basically agree with all of the other opinions. It'd be great to be in person. Uh, it's important to keep the access of the Zoom meetings. Um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Item 6B is to poll the board on setting a date for an all-boards retreat to hear administration present a state-of-the-schools overview and begin the collaborative planning process for the use of SIR3 funds. Um, I think that most people around the table here, so to speak, are quite well aware that, um, Lynn Carey, uh, in her role as Assistant Superintendent, has been, uh, absolutely, remarkably successful in knocking down, uh, SIR1, SIR2, and most especially SIR3 money um, for the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union District. And particularly the SIR3 grants, which Lynn has been able to secure, um, present a whole host of opportunities that are unlikely probably to show up for another hundred years. And I am well aware that, uh, Chris and Lynn, um, have done a fair amount of planning around this. And, um, because ultimately, when you've got that much money to spend, there are some policy considerations involved. I think it's really important that, uh, Chris and Lynn have the opportunity to tell the board um, how, how they view the state of our schools and what they would recommend, uh, to us in order to, uh, both maintain the excellence which we've been able to achieve, uh, as well as, uh, continue to strive for even more excellence. And I hate to put the B on anyone here, but, uh, Jason Terry told me he's not going to be satisfied until, um, Bellas Falls Union High School is number one in the state. Instead of simply being in the top 25%. And I'm actually with Jason, but it's not just limited to Bellas Falls Union High School. It's every school in Wyndham Northeast, which I think is capable of those sorts of outcomes. So, um, this is on here because I want, uh, board members to be aware that, you know, Chris and Lynn have done a fantastic job in terms, I think, of getting a handle on current programming and having some pretty advanced ideas of some of the things that we can be doing. And I very much would like to see if we can't, uh, get together in the very near future. And I realize it's unlikely we will be able to get every board member from every board in the room, even if it's a virtual room, at the same time. I would like to get a doodle poll going maybe and see, um, when we could get as many people as possible to have what I think will be a pretty important discussion. And Chris, um, or Lynn, if I've left anything out of that, um, help me out here, would you?
No, I think you got it covered for now. We can try to nail down a date. That'll be the first steps, I believe.
Okay, well, thank you, Chris. All right, so that's, it's on as, uh, new business for discussion and action. But it's really a board advisory and we may come back, I think, at our next meeting later this month. And we can be maybe a little bit more definitive about our timing on that. So unless there are any questions, um, or anybody wishes to weigh in, which you're welcome to do, um, we'll keep the meeting moving and maybe get done, uh, before it gets dark. Priscilla?
I was just going to say, we used to do, um, a retreat at the Saxon River Inn in June each year. And since they're not open for other things, most of the time, it might be a consideration and a place to consider.
I am aware.
Fifty feet for, um, um, for each unvaccinated person. That's what we would have to know. And I, and our lawyer has said it is okay to ask people and that we can ask. But if we did that and we're sure that we had those that were vaccinated and only the numbers, we probably could manage to get all of us because it's really opening up supposedly in June.
Well, Priscilla, the way I would leave it is if we've got the time, I've found the place. Okay, um, anyone else? Okay, um, we're down to, um, old and unfinished business for discussion and action. Uh, we'll have negotiations, uh, update in executive session. We'll have a, a brief, uh, discussion of, uh, personnel para in executive session. Directors' comments. Deb, um, would you like to start us off tonight?
Well, uh, I don't really have much of anything except that the, um, village meeting is Monday and the village voting is Tuesday for Bellas Falls. That's it. Thanks and have a good week.
Molly Bannack?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Molly. Uh, Jason Terry?
Nothing, thank you.
Uh, Priscilla Lambert?
Looking forward to in-person meetings.
Thanks, Priscilla. Uh, George Smith?
All set, thank you, sir.
Okay, Lynn Morgan?
All set, thank you.
Uh, Cheryl Charles?
Uh, well, I think, I, I think I do want to make a comment. I love the idea of the, uh, board retreat. I think our discussion tonight, uh, we're hearing about SIR and hearing about, um, the summer school program. We got a lot of depth from our superintendent and assistant superintendent that was really helpful. And I think, uh, giving the board the opportunity to get into more depth about a variety of topics that affect our children's success. Um, that it's, that it's a great opportunity and, um, and we know that there are a lot of challenges from this last year and a half. So I welcome that and I welcome the opportunity to, uh, to learn more as we all do our best to serve our kids, our teachers in this community. So thanks.
Thank you, Cheryl. Jack Brier?
As things stand, uh, on May 19th, we'll be going back before the State Board of Education, where Athens and Grafton are going to find out if they're allowed to continue to have their own district. Or going to be arbitrarily separated, possibly reassigned to somebody else or whatever other mischief our state board brethren can come up with. Uh, we do not at this point have a, a, uh, an audio and video link or a video link. I'm just hoping we'll get one. I plan to share it with you, hope that you'll be there. There are a number of things we need to provide, which is evident, the same kind of evidence that we provided that Westminster was viable on its own. We're going to have to prove, uh, to the SPE that, uh, Athens and Grafton are viable together. Uh, this is a sort of alert for Lynn and Chris on this point. And, uh, if you all can join, uh, that would be lovely and I'll get you information as soon as I have it.
Thank you, Jack. Jessica West Clark?
I'm all set, thanks.
Ian Sparta-Lotti, I'm going to ask you to have the last word tonight and help me. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
I think, I think you pronounced it correctly, yes. Uh, thank you. Uh, and I don't have any words. Uh, thanks.
All right. Let us, uh, set the date of the next meeting, which I, uh, believe will be May 26. And, uh, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session inviting administration to attend. Um, all board members, um, are invited to this, um, discussion.
Um, you know, uh, can actually, I'm sorry, David, this is Ian. I, I will, I do know that there's going to be some concern about, on some board members of my access to the negotiations update. Uh, and so I feel it's probably in our best interest to allow the high school board to weigh in on that prior to asking the, uh, SC board to consider it. So I'll just recuse myself at this time from executive session.
Thank you, Ian. I appreciate your, uh, consideration and concern. All right then, uh, I, I'm looking for a hand on a motion.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second from George, um, or was it? Okay, and I will roll call it. Uh, Molly? Okay, uh, Jack?
Jessica now has my proxies.
Okay, um, well then, in that case, Jessa?
Yes.
All right. Lynn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Um, uh, Jason Terry?
Yes.
Priscilla Lambert?
Yes.
Uh, George Smith? Okay, George is a yes. Uh, Deb Wright?
Hi.
Thank you. Molly, if I asked you already? Okay, I wondered, did I miss anyone? All right, uh, we are in executive session. All right then, I would like to annotate a motion to adjourn at 8:28 PM. I, uh, have a motion from Lynn Morgan, seconded by, uh, Jack. Actually, Jack, you indicated that you weren't my voting member.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, Jess has got, got your back, Jack. All right. Uh, all those in favor of adjournment, um, wave and say goodbye. Thank you all very much.